...... And how this is really going to affect the county for the specific with them having all these, with the do they have it all been happening? This is maybe more than okay. You know what's wrong? That is supposed to affect all the residents. But it hasn't been any of that money in the moment of the COVID pandemic. I'm without it. It's kind of kicking up the a bit. Oh. Well, it's called the but that's only five of, number five of all the things that there may be happening. Welcome to that.
Oh.
Everyone. So, the people who are Vietnam, but not Vietnam, correct that. Everybody that was a prisoner of war or any group will get their this. Daycare, also including manufacturers, all the materials, inventory, all of them. I mean, there's taxes, nothing like a intention of course, the county will assess it. So my question is, above the statute of taxes, are we gonna have to pay that special tax if they count the taxes? Or is that only gonna be to the people who got their taxes? It makes no sense to me.
How much did it get you?
There's that.
No, there's empty.
Publicly.
It'll be personal property.
Personal property, real estate, all of it, the way I read it.
School tax?
School tax, nothing, no park board tax, no nothing. The rental in there and any No, there's nothing on rental. Very good, there's on you.
Big game, well, it becomes complicated because what you're saying is in our area, where the county people, what percentage of people are not starting to get taxes, right? More, more reduced tax, one hundred and fifty, right?
Well, I mean, I don't care how many of them, I don't want to do what I'm gonna make.
What impact of, of the tax
Well, see, that's not in here, it doesn't say.
I haven't seen it.
The reason I made a discussion about that kind of question. Well, see, the states should have been the ones who sent an impact tax request on it. I'm sorry, Chris, he's good about but, I mean, I don't know how it's gonna affect our budget for the city, for the park, for Special Road District, schools, if these people become totally them, and it's not just the daycare thing, which they're, that's what they want you to see, they don't want you to see that they're cutting all the property taxes. In business in town, you're supposed to pay the tax on all your inventory. They're away with that. Every one of our businesses will no longer have to pay a tax on their inventory, their production.
Not all businesses pay taxes on inventory. All businesses do that.
Well.
Not all
And, and, but it includes their furniture, their fixtures, and all that kind of stuff. I'm just asking how this is going to affect us as a city, and park, and library, and school.
To be honest with you, we're gonna have to clarify what the demographics of the people that are gonna be, that are gonna benefit from the tax reduction, right? What's that percentage?
Well, I mean, affect our money that we get from they, what, because they include their inventory and their manufacturing?
Yeah, inventory is typically not taxed, inventory is typically, you can, you car sales tax, so when you buy wholesale goods for resale, then you don't have a tax up front. There's an exemption because that tax we pick up is very good, and so when they go to sell that to the next person, is when you start to see the taxation come into play, okay?
I, I understand that probably, but I mean, that's not really why this
Yeah, you're dealing with any of this, you know, it's impactful impact report.
There's just have this.
Wednesday on ballot consideration.
We just don't let it fall.
They all
they knew what the cost would be in two thousand and ten, so I don't have that in very high, absolutely a clean map, we get that, don't have that currently right now, I don't feel like this point.
No, I got
but this is one of those conferences, you're putting up great points, I don't actually have to prepare, I don't need any statement of this capital in any way, shape, or form on this point until we have
Well, now, do you, now, I ask another question, because it says in here that the county can hereby pass an post on all property in subclass three of class one. I mean, that's not even at dawn, my
and every time it's a first vote, they get last to the gate and throw the one for small cars. No, I don't understand what class that is in the first class, it might be thirty. Um, I mean, like I said, you bring up a good point, the only thing we just brought up in the conference is that if this was, the only option would be to do sale, now, locations are taxed at a certain percentage you can charge for sales, generally, general revenue tax in the city is capped at two percent, and if cities are already at that two percent, what the legislative is going to do is either authorize an entry from that cap for both counties, other municipalities, and the cities as well, currently because most older districts, other tax jurisdictions have bonded without, or after, you know, you know, pick them up on, how will this impact, because by law, you cannot create a situation where with, where you would be violating some other type of contract, so there's a lot of issues that, but again, if you bring out, if you, if you like to
Well, I mean, the thing of it is, is, you know, actually, over a couple weeks ago, I don't know.
Well, we got ahead, we should have had the last one from the state with being the impact. Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And so
I mean, just, was just in the paper last week, so they didn't give any of it.
So that's, that's the first step, you know, is to understand how far reaching is and you
Well, not to say that they, the statement, by law, they have to request.
Well, the knowledge here, it's just John Kittle.
Well, that's because they wanted to pass, so that, oh, there's a huge tax cut for all these manufacturers.
Well, I understand.
Yeah. The only official language that's been involved.
Well, they're leaving out.
Yeah, they're leaving out a whole lot.
There is a physical impact in how it shows that they provide pension fund, that annual loss revenue, four hundred thousand, well, that's just the fine pension.
Yeah.
That's a small portion of what the property is hurting.
It's been happy with the age.
Yeah, there's no
I mean, they, they chose to pick out a part about childcare, put that in the head because they wanted to pass, because, yes, we need daycare, don't get me wrong, we need daycare. You know, I mean, it's like, because by the fifth or sixth of August, there's a ballot, and it's gonna probably pass because of the way they headlined it, but I just was curious how that was going to affect
The best way to read that was if some of the questions were to simplify first.
I can, I can absolutely, like, pull it out without language. Into their state office or any fellowship, but that should have been happening, I think it's been through.
Well, yeah.
Both, all of them did, that's why I think
Well, this is a general assembly, first regular session.
So, one of the simple notes, we, you know, committee of that shit, that would have gone to the governor's office before it was truly agreed, I think they can get that, I think this is very municipal, the outside of me, things are gonna ask for, 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 and you know, if they have one sheet or, um, this could be, very little, this is
Well, that is
conference, and Richard can present it. And we think they can talk about this, right, so that leads me to believe that if you're in and out perspective today, there won't be to unpack the resolution from what it is, they didn't, like, they didn't
I just was curious, I just wanted to bring it up, you see, you
No, anyway, it's always a question, I'm not
Well, but you say it is, like you said, in two weeks, the ballot's over, and it, it's gonna pass, and whatever happens, happens at that point. Yeah. I don't think there will be jobs. I'm sure there will be too, but that's beside the point, how long that will take, so, anyway.
Zoom, can I say?
No, statewide.
Makes me feel a little bit
Okay, Chris, you're sure now. No problem.
Hello, everybody, first time meeting some of you in person, um, coming several times with the past, uh, few days. So, I'm currently living in an RV, here in town, well, I wanted to get married in twenty twenty-one. Bought, we live in, hooked it up, all filled, and there, uh, part of the bar, they allow RVs there, and, uh, my idea was, you know, we don't want rent, that's just, when somebody else roots, or couldn't afford, because, you know, we're young, fresh, and married, so might get a year off, we recently moved back, it's in Charlotte, uh, not born, never raised here, went to school, all that, she loves wanting to raise here. Moving down to this, uh, property, my mom owned, I recently purchased it on the last month, utilities and whatnot, pushed over already, and then we got a call from Sandy, very lovely lady, my first time looking at this, pretty amazing, uh, talking to me about, you know, there's a, you're gonna start forcing this new occupancy issue on these RVs, and I called around, got bounced back, forced to consider it, and Tommy, all last week, uh, left voicemail, and he isn't part of the occupancy, so that kids have been, he's over the entire department. Called back this morning, he was, um, unable to help me, he, his department deals with new deals and renovations, and he was unsure where to send me, I did some digging, online, whatnot, there's county zoning, that discusses RVs and temporary residency allowances up to six months, uh, especially sharing, probably be funded for six months, the house that we bought is needing some renovations before we're happy to move into it, hoping to stay in the camper, renovate the house, see how the camper, like, cinders aren't managed all, I was hoping come tonight to get some clarification, um, apparel discussed with me on phone, that, although it's mostly safety issues that you all were trying to remedy.
There's some instances that go with that as well. A lot of people, really, that are, already wrapped, and all the buildings are done with that too, trying to get electric into their units, which is not set up for that, well, we had people want to build a house, trailer on it, RV on it, we got allowed that, which has taught the people want to build, so I mean, we've been pretty stringent at this point about being pretty strict that when it comes to RVs, matter of fact, we're trying to bolster our language, I believe, uh, and we speak about, uh, not tolerating, we have the trade department, let you put an RV out there as well, it's like doing a hospital, but, I don't know, a hospital does, RVs on the front, but, this is, we've been around the horn on this one bit, and, you know, we're applying to somebody that has an RV, must come to town, and wants to, uh, uh, give the vet for a week while they're visiting, use it in that type of way, as a vacation thing, so, but, it's more of a permanent residence for a period of time, it becomes more of a blight to neighborhoods and, and property values, so, that's kinda where we've been on, and I'll let you elaborate, sir, what do you think?
Uh, do the plan out, do a plan out, we're currently jumping in with the uh, personal RV, uh, posing.
Okay, that's probably going to be, I mean, probably not be available, like discharges into our receiving, some have some direct connection to this gone through, maybe on our violation, I'll be about there with on that one. Um, we even have a counter reaction, you know, our ordinance allows drop from supremacy, but they can't, we don't not, in my knowledge, the seven-year city attorney allows everyone to reside on their property while they're building, um, so, and did you connect with sewer, like, does our system, where
We all have property, we have sewer, but
Well, I, I understand that, but talking supremacy, not everything to talk about later, I think, utility is, yeah, that's the end. Um, I just come next hour for utility, for, uh, because, because you are actually just starting into, uh, particulars. All right, the fact is, we don't always know what people are doing with their, connection with a scanner, running generators, you know, hard work, it's a fire hazard, so many airco, they do not allow aqua stands or any cases, probably because the family fires, what the fires can do in a fight over, you know, you have a RV, um, they don't have allowance or temporary, they're, they're, the board were deciding, they were like to allow, it's not a suggestion, and it needs to modify our ordinance, so that we have a fair path, and each, every, someone, this general situation will affect the actual, that, 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 that permitting.
You, you, you're currently at hospital.
We have been here in town, but it's over here. How long will they do, do you, we were planning on getting out of the camper, but the outside, I wouldn't be in the house, done for a vision.
Mostly all these, not that far away, you know what I'm saying?
It's not, but now paying mortgage, not the five hundred dollars a month rent, that's costly, that would all be hanging off my mortgage at that point.
Sure, I feel that.
So, at that point, you know, fire hazards, I did not want to be a hazard, so I went and put this three and rare, or Amber.
Yeah.
He wasn't properly, or wanted outside of the camper, even though he used those things, or, yeah, but on camper. Water, uh, with the RVs, just, uh, what it is, I was drinking water safe garden hose, we, you know, had, uh, taken outside of and two years, when I had not contacted, um, with with the now tax line, in electric, you could, you could use it for forty, in theory, we could, um, currently, the, the plan for the house is complete renovation of the bathroom and kitchen, so we would be out of areas of the house, or, we're trying to blow it as well, like I said.
Yep.
So, got the foundation, but anything to take care of first, so there's nothing else to do later, I'll get a standard by the, but I don't know where I'm at, um, I do have a code here, and it says that, you know, you're saying that you don't offer, I can't, these senators, but are, I can confirm that. Here. Oh, yeah. No, you're, you're perfect. It's, uh, legal, but uh, so, I appreciate all, as well, anyone to take a time, because we could be inducing some on the off
No, you're not, like I said, though, this is probably not gonna be a quick answer, um, you're all working with us, and we're working with you, so I know I've seen
That's good, it's one other kind of pain, so, thirty-four and a half time to figure out living rent. The time to, maybe somebody rental on there, they still get a month to figure out some other living rent, I've only given seven days, five days of actually living, only get a hold of renters or residences, or anybody else to find a place to live, so that was, that was slap in the face if I I, deep my mind.
That's fair, I mean, and it's important, right, uh, the difference is somebody had a contract, they had the lease, and they didn't live somewhere, and had things in their name, versus violating the law of residence again, so there's no, there's no grid and base where you can reside the way you perform, so, there's the difference, absolutely can't be young, trying to make it, trying to make a wish your house, add a home, build one, fix it, clean it up, when you're doing it, I absolutely understand that, so I don't like what you're doing, you don't, you're not wanted, anybody should have pulled up
Completely tell that, I'll bet you all
Yeah, we, we welcome people, we want, we want people here, but we have to be careful how we go about doing it, because unfortunately, like you, those who get sturdy, and breakers, and all these other things, you're one against a hundred
Yeah.
So, thus, it ruins it for people like you, for us to try to accommodate, because then it opens us up, it opens up to the people with the hardest responsibility, I can tell you, you're very responsible, you're the man, you got all of all, the last thing on this, like, we can't be in any of our performance, and it's just a way for us to look at, um, talk with saying, work with you some way, one more time, for, sharing out, because this is your something, and whether, maybe, we, we will try to do that, but I'm probably the problem trying to work that way, staying within, in our, in our, in our boundaries, right, and what we have to legally be, uh, consistent, right, because we've got to be consistent with people that we've got in here, so unfortunately, you have to be equally, so like you, that have a lot of, of a plan, and, and it's gonna be an often, risk, and trying to be part of, kind of, put this up, it hasn't been, we haven't We have a some, one of the very hard lines. A little more
Off the hard line, that's what he just, he was saying, no.
Oh, this is a little more convenient. Which is probably why we haven't changed. Uh, you're doing it a little too, right? Four and a half
There, yeah, only, I'm like, running, is there any desire by the board to get in a little bit more comfortable, I don't know if I thought today, it's gonna make sure that we can get guidance, just being in the heartbeat of our, like, making
I'm not really gonna talk to her, she I, I would have no problem doing that with him, you know, I mean, you've got thirty days or something, you know, I don't think you can do more than that, but that gives you some time, so
Yes, I've got car this afternoon.
I'll work with you, they'll, they'll get okay, they'll, I think you'll find everybody in our department's gonna work with you, you know, if they want to work with us.
Is that a confirmation, anybody?
You get to handle the boat. I am, with both of them, getting with Thirty seconds to extend, uh, a thirty-day, uh, occupancy for this gentleman in RV, all with fair, all opposed, passes, so we'll, thirty, thirty days
Make, thirty days from today will be
Today will be Today is the
What kind of RV is, uh, full height, that's we all twenty-five foot air camp, only the one under
Twenty, twenty-nine, I mean
Uh, not the nicest, you know, we got what we could afford, but it is, it is not the most
Appreciate your statement, you coming up, and
I agree with you
But, but it's a fair opinion, so, I took off, probably, the rest of the comments, I definitely would pay the person, yeah, that's Uh, any other comments? Time is, you know, busy, um, that's to a closing time, I'm just, I'm moving this to the consent attendance, um, I would take a note that those, uh, approved, except for always being, the board's all in meeting minutes, we have the first committee meeting, we have the government, public safety, uh, committee meeting, need pledge of support, and need activity. At first, second, will we approve the consent of attendance, and public, uh, all in favor, all opposed, passes, ten minutes, nine, five, six, that will be accounted payable over two hundred and fifty dollars, what I have here is, oh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars, oh, one ninety-one thousand seventy-six dollars.
But, when
Yeah, that ended up being more expensive, um, uh, the well, um, it ended up being more expensive, because there was a huge poll, and, and, so, all that was fake, so it's going to take a while.
Looked at that
Those rooms, you know, one of them, I do.
We're thinking
Over by
Well, one of them was under budget, so it ended up, both of them ended up coming in under what we had funded it for, so
The whole is a big problem, on more than we end up, like, overall, so that's always We did accept the count payable over one thousand two hundred and one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. First, second, to approve the account payable over one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, in favor, all opposed, pass. Now, two, seven, finance, do you have anything, uh, there? Okay. There's anything leaving? Film number, just to be done, film number?
Two, five, four, seven.
Uh, four, seven, this, more than five, would, uh, you can talk about what this is, anyway?
I will tell you what this is, so, um, in talking to MPU, you guys have made a motion last month to allow the mayor to sign a mutual aid agreement, but apparently, we have to sign an ordinance every single year, because they did not have it through last year, but, I think they're, they said we have to sign an ordinance every year for the mutual aid agreement.
For the
Mutual Act, yeah.
I think the motion to sign that agreement was enough.
Yeah.
I would like to reach out to them, because there's only one area that I know of that you're required by
That's
Well, no, I think there is good next year, it's, it's like, the fire shooter's mind is a butt ache, they really have to do important, because again, to authorize the mayor to meet the requirements of the statute of fraud, which is what these ordinance would do, there's only one section one, requires you to sign, you do work, everything else, you
If there's no
There's no law to do that, I don't have that respect for me.
Yeah. There's no What you know, did you, my last one, and they said, there's ordinance, I was like
So what I'm, what I'm looking for, is the first thing, the time alone, if we're building two, five, four, seven, uh, the legal So what I'm, what I'm looking for, is the first reading of the time alone, if we're building two, five, four, seven, of the legal, uh, uh, MPU, uh, mutual aid agreement that we just got from.
Bill number two, five, four, seven, beginning of the first reading.
At the first and second for bill number two, five, four, seven, beginning of the first, by all in favor? Although, passes for the green.
One sunrise in Maryland City of Kentucky, Missouri, to sign a mutual aid agreement. Bill number two, five, four, seven, beginning of the second reading.
At the first and second for bill number two, five, four, seven, beginning of the second reading, by all in favor?
Aye.
Although, passes for the green.
Orderman's authorized in Maryland City of Kentucky, to sign a mutual aid agreement. The bill number two, five, four, seven, not for all second.
At the first and second for bill number two, five, four, seven, not for all, 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 although, passes for the green.
Open Hudson. Or. Governor Wilson, yeah, woman Decker.
Or.
Hogan Rogers.
Or.
First, number three, or is number three?
Three, one, nine.
Then, that moves us to permission license. The business fair.
No.
Hold it, you know, the hold it. And it moves to new business. The only thing I'll say is that, uh. We have gotten from, from information, from. The folks that were the second vendors calling the, like, we've seen emails about that, since we've had it. Uh, the folks that did the project originally, the, the second place, uh, contestant in the bidding process, they've come back, it is open, the idea of doing this way. So that's, that's been.
Our little month had a group team that's coming out, but they're.
That was established on their side and to provide that service for. So that, that's been. It was, uh, four days.
We got confirmation day, I'll be here tomorrow. They, you know, it's a day, and I'll be here tomorrow.
So. They, they, they. They did a nice job, keep it some day, this is process, and, 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 if they didn't have it. We're done with it, and then back two weeks ago, probably, so. Good job. So, we can do some more. Uh, next week is possible, so, uh. You may have. At some point, it's definitely who could be, we could do, either getting somebody through to. Right, so, we know it's big, it's been time our place, been our place for a long time, and since we. Help you more, so, we'll see what happens, one, that's all I got. Any questions, Larry?
Report's in the package, uh, last month. Was a lot of working with Forward Flash and getting the new work stations put in, they were here several days last month, um, going back and forth between the different. We call the backup. Um, and then Taylor again this year, uh, they'll let me know, usually a couple days before, but it airs on Sunday night at nine thirty-one. Um. So, that's fun. Microphone, I mean, I can't talk, but anyway, um. Completed a, um, consumer comment report, that's been done for the year, that the yearly report is on our website, um. DNR requires it, but. We set up this hour, rather than another hour, today. And then I also attended a three month court and a special event, public information emergency notification training in Jeff City over two days, and I will tell you, the first day I was there. Tell the president, thought that I was in the wrong place, because there was a whole lot of talk about court, but, um, it was a very good, and I hope. Enjoying maybe small, but we do have lots of different events in town, and just the thinking that you could go in the place before the event happened, and working with and coordinating with, um, to, to the people who run these events, it, it was very good information. So I was certified in that, but it was, it was, it was.
It was worth it.
It was very worth it. And it was very. Um. And then, so far, working on this month, they, uh, we are going, going to close on the E P N X farm parade. Everything's moving today, and, um, working on that, um, I contacted G I S at Boone County, and they have printed and have our maps ready, so we're replacing the big maps in my office and in here. That one is from two thousand and twelve, so we'll have, uh. Pretty nice updates on their, so we can actually, where we've got new subdivisions and our city lines. All of that. That's going. I'm also working on our zoning map, zoning map hasn't been. Officially done since two thousand and fourteen, and I'm working with Sydney, um, to, uh. See what we need to do to make sure we're properly about that. When we get that done. Um, so that's on.
Are we going to rezone?
It's not rezoning, it's all the different, um, licenses that we've passed that allow for rezoning and passed since two thousand and fourteen, we need to get put on. And I want, how often should we do that, like, to, uh, update the actual map? It's mainly. It's review. Your comments, and. Or taking your. On the. So I'm getting. Now, I would not say it was a waste of time, they did, um, decide that it probably wasn't right for us right now, but. Basically, what they do is they look at certain areas of our town, and they track information, so they track places. Where people are coming from to shop at our friends, where how far are these people traveling to shop at our friends, and we can use that information if we want to go out and shop, and try to get another grocery to come to town, and so we've got people coming from all these different areas to shop in.
That makes sense, but any of those cousins are their own team.
My question does not trigger your chamber power, or like. I, I did tell them, you know, I'm sorry. Did let them know that we do work with, ready.
I'll be, I'll be saying, I thought all these. They, they have a team that does that, that you. Or personally, if. And if they can give us an idea of what your type of base is, then I'd be happy to. That's. That's how they go, but it's a good replacement. But whatever they say is. You know, because it's a plan area. They're all, you know, they're going to. Thank you. Do you think? Good, thank you.
Working, creating, but. We're not looking at. I'm very sure it's going to be. So, so, we, um, uh, so very. Um, I think we've agreed. Um, that's taken out. There. So all of them. Play only two minutes. Um. Have a long, actually, and, 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 three. Three with small, that's a very. This now, there were twenty-four bills, uh, P three, three, and all the states that were passed, all the things that were, all the latest bills, that were created, so the standard bills are on the party, the conversation, I think, there is little, little. There is one omnibus bill that came through, and we're being chased that out, even. It's not really. It's not really the, set it and, you know, it's all out there, all utility, it's not, it's not the other thing. You know, I'm wondering now if that is, we just pull them from the, from the, to be other help.